Listen, for these people up here that's ornery, I'm gonna hit the gavel, okay? So they will leave me alone, okay? I'm just passive and easy up here and they're like taking it away from me if I didn't hit it. So we're getting started now. You ready, Michael? I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, April the 1st, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the Town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams. To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyle, and he is out doing something. He will be back in in just a few minutes. To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Hello.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening, y'all.
This time, I would like to welcome Reverend Dr. Morgan Murray to come up and pray for us from Sassagotha Presbyterian Church.
Good evening, everyone. Would you please join me in a word of prayer? Thank you, Lord, for all our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you continually bless them. Give the mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council wisdom as they address the growing pains our town continues to experience. As they review the vision plan and continue to address issues of increased traffic, may you provide them with the resources and resilience to make wise decisions that stay true to the town's values. It is our earnest desire that the work done this evening will contribute to safe neighborhoods, thriving small businesses, and compassionate care for our most vulnerable neighbors. We know that this town has been blessed, and that to whom much is given, much is required. As we have been blessed with many new neighbors, may you generously give to each of our town leaders discerning hearts to skillfully govern as they serve this increasingly diverse community. In all things, Lord, we ask that these leaders be graced with the ability to distinguish between right and wrong, and to bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Murray. I appreciate it. Next, I would like to welcome veteran of the U.S. Air Force and the U.S. Navy, Mr. Ron Griffin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We all stand with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Griffin, would you like to tell us a little bit about your service? We like to hear a little bit about y'all serving our country.
Um, I did serve in the Navy right out of high school for nine years, active duty. Got out for several years, and then after 9/11, decided I needed to find a way back in the military. So eight months later from 9/11, I was on active duty in the Air Force. I spent 12 years in the Air Force, and I retired from the military in 2014. Did about seven years with the Richland County Sheriff's Department. Then my wife decided she wanted us to be real estate agents, so we got our broker's license and did that. I do not do that anymore. I do have my broker's license. That's all on my wife, but I spend a lot of time with American Legion Patriot Guard riders doing funerals and stuff for veterans, and it's just a really big part of my life and everybody, really, that's involved with it.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate you, and thank you for coming tonight. At this time, I will now call the meeting to order. Council met in executive session prior to this meeting where we discuss the following matters: legal issues related to proposed utilities, fiber optic cable franchise agreements, and advice regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
Submoved.
I hear Councilman Carnes make the motion. Mayor Protem Williams, second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And before we go any further, Will, do you want to clarify your vote last time, or are you gonna do it with the minutes on the...
I can do it now, or when we ratify the minutes.
Alright, let's do it then, okay? Are there any deletions of items on tonight's agenda? I know that we'll be removing the, one of the presentations for Shayla Bowers. We'll be removing that until next month, correct? Anything else? Hearing none. Approval minutes, a copy of minutes from the council work session on February the 12th, 2024, and special called council meeting on March 11th, 2024 are attached. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to refer to my dissenting vote on the ratification of the mayor's executive session report at the special meeting on March 11th, 2024. While I did not vote to ratify the report, I did not mean to indicate the report was inaccurate. I simply had a respectful difference of opinion with some council members on one of the subjects discussed. The items in the report were accurate and the only, were the only topics we discussed during the executive session that morning. Please add this to the minutes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Submoved.
Councilman Smith makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem Williams, second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, I think. Did you? Couldn't see ya.
I'm not gonna make that mistake again.
Now we will open the public hearing. Portion of this meeting, we ask that those that want to speak to please come to the podium and provide your name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and a timer will be set by the clerk, which will beep when the three minutes is up. There will be no standing headcount of opponents or proponents. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain facts regarding the subject matter on the agenda. Please note, this is only for a council and not a question and answer session. These guidelines are in place to help the public hearing portion run efficiently and allow all those that wish to speak proper time. With that, is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the public hearing for tonight? Impact fee ordinance change to amend it, mend section 9.11. And if there's nobody that comes forward to speak, we'll move forward and close the public hearing. Next, we have a proclamation on the agenda tonight. Or, need to move over. Read by Councilmember Jenny Michaels for Lemonade Day.
A proclamation of the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington declaring May 4th, 2024, as Lemonade Day in the Town of Lexington. Whereas Lemonade Day Lexington, LDL, is launching a new community-wide youth entrepreneurship program this year, which strives to provide a stronger sense of community and especially for at-risk youth, a sense of meaning and belonging in their community. And whereas Lemonade Day teaches youth how to start, own, and operate their very own real-life business through fun, interactive curriculum in fundamentals of business and financial management. And whereas LDL teaches children how to create budgets, set profit-making goals, serve customers, repay investors, and give back to the community while helping them acquire skills in goal-setting, problem-solving, and gaining self-esteem critical for future success. And whereas LDL engages all areas of the community, including families, businesses, youth organizations, schools, and community leaders with the objective to empower youth to take ownership of their own lives and become productive members of society as business leaders, social advocates, volunteers, and forward-thinking citizens of tomorrow. And whereas on May 4th, 2024, youth throughout the Town of Lexington will set up their lemonade stands created by their own decisions and their hard work and make their own money to further the objectives of Lemonade Day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May 4th is hereby declared as Lemonade Day in the Town of Lexington, and that all citizens are urged to be a part of Lemonade Day and support the program and help to make a powerful impact on the youth of Lexington and benefit the entire city and its future. And now I'll ask if the representatives want to get up and if the mayor would like to join for a picture? Love to do that.
He's got lemonade.
He should've made the mayor put that on there.
I could give you lemons, right? I'm not, you go ahead.
Alright, one, two, three.
Mayor, you should've worn that hat.
I'm sure they preempted it.
Our next proclamation is for National Animal Therapy Day, April 30th, 2024. Proclamation, National Animal Therapy Day, whereas there are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States. And whereas research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas therapy animal teams in the Town of Lexington play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life. And whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. And whereas more pet owners are urged to consider becoming pet partner volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. And whereas Pet Partners has designated, designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that April 30th is hereby declared National Therapy Animal Day in the Town of Lexington, and that all citizens are encouraged to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further be it declared that the town council salutes the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. And I'm gonna go one step forth further. Maybe we need a therapy animal for council. And I would like for you to come forward with that pretty little baby. She thinks that my cat could be a therapy animal, but I promise you, she cannot.
I'll let you tell us about that afterwards.
This is Sterling. He's been a pet therapy cat for about a year, and I have to say, it's pretty hard to get into places that are interested in. So I'm just trying to bring awareness to it, and hopefully we can get more. There are some dog, lots of dog pets that can handle, but a little bit harder at that stuff. But he's, as you can see, he's pretty chill.
Thank you. Our next presentations tonight are awards being read by police, Lexington Police Department's Chief, Terrence Green. Medal of Valor awards for two of our officers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the great citizens of Town Lexington. Today is a great day that we acknowledge two great officers that we had here, Officer Brad Rolfe and First Class Officer Will Roland. An act of valor is considered to be above and beyond the call of duty, exhibiting exceptional courage, extraordinary determination, precedent combined, and unusual swiftness of action, regardless of one personal safety, in an attempt to save or protect human life. For considerable courage and devotion to the duty and support of a sister's agency called for aid on September 6th, 2023. Patrolman First Class Robert Will Roland and Patrolman Brad Rolfe received emergency call for assistance from the Lexington County Sheriff's Department involving an armed and dangerous individual. Without hesitation, Officer Roland and Rolfe responded and stopped the threat of further harms to citizen and other law enforcement officers. Patrol Roland and Rolfe, by their undoubted courage and unwavering devotion to duty in the face of extreme pressure, reflected great credit upon themselves and upheld the highest tradition of the Lexington Police Department. For Patrolman First Class Robert Will Roland and Patrolman Brad Rolfe, devotion to duty is hereby awarded the Medal of Valor. Just a little bit about the officers. Patrol First Class Robert Roland began his career in law enforcement in January of 2021 with the Columbia College Police Department. Officer Roland followed his father, Robert Will Roland Jr., footsteps, who retired from the United States Secret Service and currently is a major with the Lexington County Sheriff's Department. Officer Roland spent five years of police officer with Columbia College Department. During his time at Columbia College, Officer Roland was able to complete his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. In February 2007, he was hired and started with Lexington Police Department. He is currently a patrol officer on Charlie shift. Roland has previously served as a traffic officer in the Special Operations Division, where he became a traffic officer and completed nearly 600 hours of traffic reconstruction classes and other traffic safety courses. Officer Roland works as the, as a part of the Lexington Police Department Drone Team and the alcoholic enforcement team. Officer Roland is married to Caitlin Roland and has a two-year son named Dawson. Officer Brad Rolfe, originally from Michigan, where he earned a bachelor's and associate's degree in criminal justice, also completed the Police Academy in Michigan. He started as a deputy in 2014 at Feral County Sheriff's Office, where he earned the rank of sergeant. He began his career with us in 2022. He's married to Ashley Rolfe and has a son, Judah Rolfe. Mayor and Council, this is, I've been here 30 years, and I believe these are, this is the first time the department has issued these awards, and it was given in great honor and respect to them for what they did, and I think they deserve another round of applause.
Yeah, I can't see you when you back.
I'll keep you guessing, how about that?
Next up is our vision plan. The Old Mill Pond Trails, construction on the Old Mill Pond Trail continues. Right now, work has begun on the final bridge near the Old Mill Brew Club, and that same area, new parking lot curbing has begun. Virginia Hilton Park, the trails on the South Church Street side of Virginia Hilton Park have been completed and landscaping is underway. Work continues on the splash pad and walkways connecting Town Hall to the park. We hope to announce a grand opening dates for both of these very soon. To see the latest on all the vision plan projects, visit lexse.com. Next up, we have the traffic update from Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. In case y'all haven't noticed, school's out, so everybody's on spring break. Just a reminder that the traffic patterns may be a little different than normal. I know today, several of my employees said, man, I got here in three minutes, what happened? So just be aware that school is out, so next Monday, be ready for the slowdown again. Meadow Springs Road deceleration lane is set to go out to bid this week. This continues the town's efforts to make transportation improvements on United States 378 to enhance traffic efficiencies for the citizens and folks that travel through the Town of Lexington. This is all part of our local transportation improvement plan that was developed back in 2017. We encourage you to follow the town social media pages, especially the police department's page for traffic alerts. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, any unsafe roadway condition, or a pothole that might need repair. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, Appeal of Administrative Decision for Availability of Utility Service. Thank you, Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an appeal of an administrative decision, and here are the facts therein. Tier Homes LLC is disputing the Town of Lexington's decision that sewer service is available for the purpose of serving the proposed Priceful Estate subdivision, a planned 89-unit subdivision at the end of Veterans Court off Augusta Highway across from Centerville Elementary School. The town has indicated service is available per terms of its policy, which is attached. The Utilities Department sent this determination to the applicant in September of 2023. On February 1st, 2024, the applicant's attorney notified the town that the applicant disputed this determination. The letter of dispute was treated as an appeal of the decision of the Utilities Department and per town's procedure was forwarded to the office of the town administrator. The town administrator upheld the decision of the Utilities Department, and the applicant now makes this appeal to town council. The applicant is represented by Mr. Wesley Peel of Bruner Powell Wall and Mullins of Columbia. And at this point, I put that on the floor and presumably invite the applicant to make their case for us here.
I'm gonna get you to do a motion first on what it, well, you wanna hear it for discussion.
Yeah, we gotta hear it first.
Okay, for discussion.
Okay. So, sir, the floor is yours if you would like to speak to us about this.
Thank you. I'm Wesley Peel from Bruner Powell, right across the river, and I represent Tier Homes. First thing I want to say is, I don't want anyone involved with this to think I'm criticizing them. Everybody at Town Lexington has been really wonderful and cooperative and helpful, which is a refreshing change from a lot of what I'm used to. So before I say anything tonight, we just have a little disagreement over what I think the terms say. And I have some notebooks here with some documents, and if I could hand them out to council, there are not many, I'm just gonna put them quick. Thank you very much. So my client, Tier Homes, are kind of new to Lexington. They've been building in Richland and Kershaw for a while. This, of course, is located outside the city limits, really toward Gilbert off Veteran Courts, but you also access it off Priceful Road over by the softball field. There are a couple of ins and outs on it. It's actually 82 lots, I misstated that. And what, what they're trying to do is build some affordable homes. Right now, the, the average cost in Lexington County, median price is $320,000. Most of y'all probably know that. Some is floating around there. They're trying to come, bring these homes in, 220 to 250, targeting school teachers, first responders, that type of, those type of folks, so we can get these, these homes in for them. If you'll, if you look, tab one's the layout, tab two is the location, just for your reference, and I put in red where those lots are and where it isn't. And if you'll see, you can see across the street is Centerville Elementary, Centerville Elementary. The pink line is the sewer line that's out there. If you can see, that runs down the side of US 1 on the south side, on the bottom, and it services the school. That's what it's there for. Tab three is a picture of where the active lines are right now in pink off the GIS, and we're down in the bottom left corner is Centerville Elementary. But see, all that on the north side is currently not served of other side of US 1. Tab four is just a closer picture with Centerville right there, so you can, and the reason this is important is by requiring Tier to tap into the town's sewer system, it's gonna require boring under five lanes of US 1, putting in a lift station, and numerous other things. And the reason that's important is because that will raise the cost of the lots by close to $32,000 each, which is gonna add on $135 a month to, or more to, anybody's house payment's gonna be over there, and over the, over the course of that loan, that's tens of thousands of dollars that would add to those homes. By, by requiring the sewer service, this would, to be, to be doable, they'd have to reconfigure all the lots, make them larger, and thereby raising it probably up over the median home price. So the dispute is this. In 1997, through the Central Midlands COG, the, the Town of Lexington agreed to be governed by their water plan, the 280 water plan. And in determining, and that's, that tells us how to determine whether or not you can require, the municipality can require a builder to hook into the sewer line. And that is at tab 13, and what it says is, the policy is, when available and where cost-effective, existing individual disposal systems, new urban or suburban developments should be required to connect to a public wastewater collection system. But it says is, when available and where cost-effective. So there are two factors that the municipality should consider when there's an application. The town's policy that was Mr. Cunningham provided to me is behind tab 12, says, and these are, these are important words I think, sewer shall more or less be considered to be available if a sewer of adequate capacity exists at the following distances from a proposed single-family residential project. And what, what the town uses, and I'm not sure if this was passed an ordinance or where it came from, but what the town uses is, depends on how many lots there are and how many feet, and that's the sole, this is all that she used. And so my question was to the, to the town is, well, where do we consider cost-effective? And this is because every project's gonna be different. You could have to bore through rock, you have to, like this one, put in a lift station to bore on the highway. That, all this does is, is relate to the size of the subdivision and distance from sewer line. That does not consider how cost-effective it is to build those lots and for those lines That does not consider how cost-effective it is to build those lots and for those lines to be run. And in fact, you can see my line of questioning. I put this in for y'all to just see. And Tab 7 is my email with the town's engineering, and I was asking these questions. And really, the responses were all, well, anecdotal, and we've done this before, and we think it's available. Well, available is not defined. And so if this goes to court, you look at the standard term, and available means it's right there and ready to hook into. And that's not the case here. The town's free, according to DHEC, to determine what available means. But y'all did that through the 208 Plan, and so you had to be governed by that, and we didn't consider any cost-effectiveness. So on behalf of my client, I'm asking the council to please reconsider. We'd like to bring these lots in out there in Gilbert at a price where folks that need homes, or if we have a shortage of. And I did attach to the end, and this was just, the county had a study done last year on affordable homes, and one of the things they listed, one of the biggest constraints in being able to bring in some of these homes for folks that can't afford a half million dollar home is regulatory conditions often make affordable housing the most difficult to build. And that's the situation here. There's a letter in my file from DHEC in the folder, and basically, DHEC said, look, you know, we may or may not grant you these, but if the town says no, don't even put them in, because we're gonna deny them. And based upon everything they got, they said no. So I respectfully asked council to reconsider and let us build those homes out there using on-site wastewater management. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you need more information, I'm happy to provide it to your council.
Yes, sir. I just have a few questions. Looking at the site plan, looks like these lots are laid out at 45 feet wide. And I think in that area now, you probably got 10-foot side yard setbacks with New County standards. So, you know, I'm just, I'm curious, at 45-foot wide lots with either 5 or 10-foot side yard setbacks, have you guys done any soils work to figure out if you can stack 90 septic systems that close together?
I do not know the answer to that.
That's fine.
I'd be happy to give, but I don't know the answer to it.
That's fine. Just curious.
There is mentioning some of the DHEC stuff about depending on test of what you can do. So I know that's out there, but I don't know if it's done.
Certainly. And this layout, just curious, has this layout been presented to the county under their new guidelines and regulations? Because when I look at this, I certainly don't see the green space that I think is required. So I'm just curious, are they waiting on us to start that process, or did they start the process with the county?
My understanding, and if I'm wrong, I'll follow up and let y'all know.
That's fine, yeah.
My understanding is it was previously approved as a subdivision.
Okay.
And that we were, the only thing holding back building is the, how we're gonna be able to deal with wastewater.
So just to be clear, the county did approve 82 lots at 45 feet wide each?
Not positive.
That's your understanding?
That's my understanding, but if you don't...
I just wanted to clarify.
If that's wrong, I will let Mr. Cunningham know in the morning.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
My client, sir, was out of town for Easter and...
No, that's fine. That's fine. No, that's fine.
Mayor, I have a question, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Cunningham, in this document he provided us, he referenced a cost price of a house. But I don't believe council can enter into an agreement and stipulate pricing on a house, can we? So we could, they could propose this number now, but they could go build the houses and charge whatever they want to later, without a restriction from this body. Thank you.
I got one more follow-up, and then, and you may not know, these are technical questions. I live in the space a little bit, but in the, it looks like the price quote that we were provided has $975,000 for a lift station required per, it says Lexington County, but it would be per us.
Yes, that's right.
But then it has another $525,000 to install an on-site sewer system that will be required per town of Lexington standards? I'm not sure what that is. Are you sure?
Uh, no. I'm not sure what that is.
That's fine. That's fine.
Anybody else have any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion me to take it under advisement? I'd move, I'd move to take it under advisement pending maybe answers to some of these questions.
And... Anybody else?
Discussion.
Discussion for taking it under advisement, or?
Yeah, I mean, before we vote, I just, I would just say, and I appreciate your presentation. It looks like we want a little more information, but I would say, my opinion in reviewing it is, I measured it before we came in here, and it looks like, I mean, it looks like you're about 1,600 feet from the pump station that's at Centerville. And so, I mean, if they've got those 83, 45-foot wide lots, like if they don't have those pre-approved, I don't think they'll get those approved. But if they did, that doesn't seem like an overwhelming burden to run that 1,600 feet instead of stacking in. I think the reason we put it in, to stack in 90 septic systems that close to one another, all in one area, is, I think, something everybody's trying to get away from. I think if they wanted to maybe consider reducing the density, you know, our qualifications are based on number of lots. And so I think at their number, it would require us to, require us to change our current standards by about 70%, which seems like an uphill climb. So it may be a scenario where they maybe want to revisit that and get closer to the standard and have that conversation. But it doesn't look like we're gonna, we're not gonna vote it up or down today. We're gonna take it under advisement, but that would be my advisement.
Mayor, could we make sure that it's clear on the record what additional information you want, so Mr. Peel could provide it to you?
Yeah, I was curious about whether or not this has been submitted and approved by the county in particular before the pending ordinance doctrine related to concurrency went into effect about three months ago? And then that estimate on that on-site sanitation system that was $525,000 line item, just not sure what that was.
And the septic bills?
Yeah, I'd be interested to see if there's any soil study done. And again, I'm interested in the timing, maybe not just the three months ago with concurrency, but also maybe nine months ago when the county got very infatuated with septic tanks as it relates to a short-term rental proposed ordinance? That seems to be very interested in people's septic tanks. Interested to know when this would have gotten approved through the county as well.
And the last thing, I mean, generally in the development world, once you get close to 100 lots, you kind of figure out you're gonna absorb the cost of a lift station. And so, I mean, they're right on that cusp, and that's pretty standard. Once you get to that level, you kind of gotta absorb that cost so that you don't have all of those septic systems kind of on top of each other. But we're certainly open to hearing the replies to all the...
I'll gather that, and I just want to make it clear. I mean, all those good points, the only thing I'm addressing, I think Mr. Cunningham noticed, is, doesn't appear to me that cost-effectiveness was analyzed by the town. I think it needs to be. So that's really the point of my appeal.
Understood. Yes, sir.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So your cost analysis, are you saying because of the fact that it's gotta go under the road? Or is it because of the fact that it's gotta have the lift station? Or is it because it has to do all of it? What, I'm...
Okay, well, let me put all those, my facts aside, my specific facts aside, and say this. The way I read 208, the COG plan, is any member of that COG, when you're deciding whether sewer is available to a subdivision, you have to decide, was it accessible and is it cost-effective to do so? And those are the two things that have to be considered. And I did not get any, what I considered to be answers to those questions or responses from the administration. And so that's the sole purpose of the appeal.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I think we owe you a thorough explanation on that, whichever way it goes, so.
Well, I appreciate it. And like I said, everybody was just so helpful, and it's a very pleasant change. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir.
Item number two is first reading granting of fiber...
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm sorry to take this under advisement. And when he gets our answers back, and maybe staff looking at some more things, then we'll bring it back when we have everything.
Yeah, take a vote.
Okay. So take it under advisement. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Okay, now the second item is granting of fiber optic cable franchise agreement. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ripple Fiber, Inc. is requesting to enter into a franchise agreement with the town of Lexington. This company installs fiber optic telecommunications lines in the public road right-of-way. Town requires, just like any other utility, a franchise agreement pursuant to Code Section 111-17 of the Business License Ordinance, which states in part, subsection A, "It shall be unlawful for any person to conduct, install, maintain, or operate in or above or under any street or public place under control of the municipality, any line, pipe, pole, structure, or facility for utilities, communications, cablevision, or other purposes without a consent agreement or franchise agreement issued by the council by ordinance that prescribes the term, fees, and conditions for use." State law allows this grant under South County Code Section 58-9-2230, which is a structure by our state legislature, which gives some guidance on the amount of fees that the town may charge to the utility to provide her as part of that franchise. And so, Madam Mayor, I would make a motion for first reading approval for title only, for the town to enter into the fiber optic cable franchise agreement.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second sit. Any discussion?
I'll, yes, Mayor, I'll, since it's first reading only, we will not have a... Are we planning on having a second reading prior to them completing all the requirements? Or we're gonna wait until all the requirements are completed?
Second reading could be as early as April 15th, when we've agreed upon all the terms, both parties.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
So it's left up to them of getting everything completed and in.
Okay.
I would be in favor of making sure that all material terms are ironed out, as I know there's been some bumps in the road with this particular utility provider. And while it'd be great to offer all the town residents that fiber optic, it's also not worth having the cost of damage to the right-of-way. I think there's been some failure to properly isolate or identify pups and underground things. So we certainly want to make sure anybody doing business in the town's doing it the right way.
Thank you, Councilmember Lyle. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next item is Accommodations Tax Applications 2024. Councilmember Michaels.
The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on March 12th to review 2024 accommodations tax applications. Total funds requested by nine applicants totaled $211,500. For 2024, the town has available $187,364.30 from the 65% A tax fund designation. A spreadsheet listing the request and the accommodations tax committee's award recommendations is attached for review and approval. I make a motion to approve these recommendations.
Councilmember Michaels makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Sir, moved.
Makes the second. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Is Wes, there he is. Wes, can you tell me, the Ice House was not approved for the full amount by $3,500. Do you know what they did not approve of that $3,500?
There wasn't anything specific for that reason. It was just to distribute the funds across some of the other applicants.
We need to, the committee works a lot of hours going through these applications.
They did review through it, and they asked some questions of Mr. Brewer, and felt like just moving $3,500 from his request, so it wasn't a total award to a few of the other applicants, made sense for them.
Okay. I just didn't know there was a certain item they didn't agree with, or...
It's pretty simple.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Our fourth item is annexation of 332 Railroad Avenue. Councilmember Will Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David A. Thomas owns .52 acres located at 332 Railroad Avenue, and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the parcel. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Railroad Avenue is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and a local road classification for Railroad Avenue. I move for first reading approval.
Councilmember Allen makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Williams, second sit. Do I hear any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Anson, it says that it's, there's high density around this property, and it says the Planning Commission recommended protected residential. I'm assuming we're going with PR1?
That is correct.
Okay, so this cannot be changed into high density without going back through zoning?
No, sir, it cannot. This was the couple that came to you all in January that...
Ah, gotcha now.
Stuck across the street?
Requesting the variance across the street and...
Gotcha. Awesome. Thank you.
Just their house.
Awesome.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Item number five is appointment for Small Business Advisory Committee by Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 16 applications were reviewed for the Small Business Advisory Committee. Council reviewed and selected the following nine as committee members. Ozme Jabali, Lori Moros, Karen Norman, Fallon Hines, Brian Nelson, Edwin Grace, David Lapore, Michelle Sarokas, and Matthew Thompson. With that being said, I make a motion to appoint the applicants to the Small Business Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Item number six is a resolution of Sats Gothel Lexington Public Facilities Corp., Ice House Tiff. Mayor Protem Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The refunding rollover of the Ice House Tiff ban, which is due on May 3rd, 2024, requires a resolution from town council. The attached resolution authorizes the ban rollover and matters related thereto. This authorization is necessary due to the project delay flood of 2015, which delayed the completion of the Old Mill Trail Project, which is in the final Ice House Tiff redevelopment project. The delay resulted in the rollover period for bans extending beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. Sats Gothel Lexington Public Facilities Corporation, at the annual meeting, authorized financing for both the Crawley Mill Tiff and the Ice House Tiff on behalf of the corporation. This resolution authorizes the Ice House financing by town council. I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing Sats Gothel Lexington Public Facilities Corporation by anticipation notes to be dealt with.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Carnes, second sit. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next item is by Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton, propose removal of business license.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I believe that the sidebar we had here at the beginning of the meeting was an effort to resolve this, so if I may, I'd like to take over this at this point. And we just want to ask, Gayong Nancy Fang, are you present? If you would, please come forward also with your representatives. Thank you. And sir, if you would say your name for the record real quick, to her right, yes.
Thank you. This is a pastor of a Chinese church where she goes, so I'm here to translate for her.
And your name is?
My name is Kwame Su.
Okay, Mr. Su, and then to Ms. Fang's left is, if you'd introduce yourself, sir, please.
I'm Donald Whitaker.
Okay. Now, Ms. Fang, do you understand the purpose of what we're doing this evening? Okay, you understand that this was a tribunal or a hearing related to the revocation of a business license? Do you understand that?
I understand.
Okay. And you understand that you have the right to have counsel and someone represent you here tonight? You understand that?
You have the right to...
Okay, and she understands that if we were to go forward on this hearing, there would be evidence put forth, and you would have the right to cross-examine or ask questions on your own of the people who are going to put in evidence. You understand that? You'd have the right to put up your own case?
If you can't solve it, you have the right to solve it.
You understand that, okay. And so in the, I also understand that of the three licenses, the business license that are currently under suspension for the location at 812 East Main Street, the Tao Spa, you understand that we made an agreement that you were going to consent to the revocation of that license? Is that right?
You understand that?
And that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so you consent to that, and in turn for that, Town of Lexington is going to lift the suspension on the other two businesses at 5483 Sunset Boulevard Suite F and 5843 Sunset Boulevard Suite C. Those two, the suspensions will be lifted. That's your understanding, is that right?
If you just leave it in, it doesn't affect the business.
And you consent to this?
I agree.
All right. And you also consent to the fact that if the state or the town were to go forward, you do believe there was sufficient evidence to likely get that revocation, but in lieu of going through all that, we're going to consent and agree that the town is going to accept your revocation of the license at the 812 East Main Street, and we're going to lift the suspensions on the other two business locations, correct?
If you agree, it doesn't affect the business.
So you consent to all of that? Is that a yes?
Yes.
And you understood what we've been doing?
I understand.
And your pastor has interpreted everything to your understanding, correct?
I understand.
You understand?
Yes.
All right. Do you have any further questions of us? All right. Madam Mayor, I think if we could just put in whatever report into the record, just to have it for the file, so that good housekeeping, I think that can resolve this issue. So I'd like to make sure we do put that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we will move on to new business item number seven.
Do we need to vote to accept that revocation? Is that good housekeeping?
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would move that we accept the revocation of the Tao Spa's license for 812 East Main Street, and in turn for that, the town has agreed to lift the suspensions on the other two locations. So I make that motion.
Do I hear a second? Mayor Protem seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I think it was unanimous.
Thank you.
Old business item number one, it would be, let's see, impact fee ordinance agreement, Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town's impact fee ordinance has been in effect since February 1, 2020. Two specific updates would ensure the ordinance is consistently applied. The recommendation is to amend Section 9.11 Special Cases to provide for the following: Any change of use to an existing structure that is intended and reasonably expected to last for less than 366 days should be considered temporary and not subject to impact fees since the use will not increase demand for applicable municipal services due to the temporary nature of the change. Should the temporary nature of the change extend beyond 366 days, impact fees will be fully assessed in accordance with the ordinance. Number two, structures which were unoccupied as of the implementation date of the ordinance shall be given credit for the most recent use or highest use that can be established which occurred prior to the implementation date. The Planning Commission reviewed these changes at their January meeting and recommended approval. Madam Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval of this ordinance to amend the impact fee ordinance, Section 911 Special Cases.
Councilmember Carnes makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith makes the second. Is there any discussion?
Maybe can, just a word, a quick word of explanation related to the 366 days, so the citizens understand, if somebody takes over an office building, has three people go to it every day, and turns it into a Chick-fil-A that has 3,000 people go to it every day, we need to assess an impact fee based on traffic. But if, so that's part of the ordinance, but if somebody does a change of use that's very temporary and wants to do something in that building for three months, our ordinance did not give us the discretion to recognize that as a small temporary change and not assess the impact fee. And the other one is self-explanatory, great updates to an impact fee that's been very helpful to our town, provided a lot of money for transportation in our parks.
Thank you, Member Councilwoman Carnes. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Are there any questions from the news media? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I would like to start off with some announcements, that we would like to welcome three new employees to our Town Hall family that were hired in March of 2024. Caleb Smith to Parks Department, Robert Holder to the Police Department, and Russ Ulmer to the Utilities Department. So welcome to the three new employees that we have. And Town Administrator Gleaton, I think you have something?
I do. I'd like to take a few moments to recognize a few of our town employees. We heard about some fantastic Police Department employees and their Medal of Valor, but I want to recognize a few folks from our Parks Department. On March 22nd, our Parks Director, Dan Walker, received a handwritten note of thanks from a resident, Mrs. Bradley, for the assistance provided by three Parks Department employees, Mary, Scott, and Shannon. Ms. Bradley called the Parks Department recently desperate to identify the type of insect that bit her dog while on a walk. It was critical to know the insect in order to provide veterinary care. Mary promptly dispatched Scott and Shannon to the site, and they met Ms. Bradley to evaluate the area. According to Mrs. Bradley, quote, "Their genuine concern for my dog's well-being, along with their specific expertise, were truly answered prayers. They shared their experience, observations, and literally inspected the exact area thoroughly. Their expertise helped to narrow down a broad list of possibilities to a likely culprit." End quote. It's my honor to commend our employees for their prompt and thoughtful assistance to Mrs. Bradley. We're very lucky to have staff like them in Lexington. And as Mrs. Bradley so kindly wrote, quote, "They're a perfect example of why Lexington is such a beautiful place to live inside and out."
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other announcements from staff or council? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, April 1, 2024. Recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel, and without objection, we're adjourned.